This is a regular meeting of the City Council that's incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2014, which is filed by the City clerk's office and posted on bulletin board on December 27, 2013, and sent to the Starlight Drive and the Montney Street View in compliance with the provisions of the Vol. Public Meeting Law of New Jersey.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye. I would like to call on Councilwoman Torres for the prayer of the meeting.
In light of God, that legislature for our community, in strong sense of justice and fair credit, permeable in all that we know, above all, I would sing out your word, give us a strength of fatherhood, and our love for the city.
I pledge allegiance to the mother of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, my nation, our mother, indivisible, and every single nation of the world.
Public speaking, is anyone here wishing to address the City Council? Seeing none, I close the public portion of speaking of the meeting, can move on to public hearings.
Ordinance number 4473, and ordinance to vacate a portion of Henry Street between Julia Street and Fairmount Avenue, more particularly described situated in the city of Elizabeth County, Union State, New Jersey.
Is there anyone wishing here to speak on ordinance number 4473? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4474, amend bond ordinance number 3778, adopted January 10, 2006, for renovations to the Mac Building for the E-Port Health Center in the amount of $3,800,000, specifically to reappropriate bonds in the amount of $1,100,000 for demolition of the Mac Building and part improvements to the property.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4474, is there anyone here wishing to address the City Council on ordinance number 4474? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4475, authorize the adoption of bond ordinance in the amount of $1,000,000 from a down payment of $50,000 for the installation of traffic lights and road resurfacing at the intersections of East Jersey Street and Winfield Scott Plaza and Jackson Avenue and Monroe Avenue and Amish Street.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4475, is there anyone here wishing to address the City Council on ordinance number 4475? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4476, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $750,000 for the purchase and installation of new buses.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4476, is anyone here from our public wishing to address the City Council on ordinance number 4476? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. With the consent of my colleagues, I would like to dispense with the reading of the petitions and the communications of the force of city officers, and move on to ordinance that's on first reading.
Ordinance number 4477, rescind ordinance number 368, adopted January 25, 2005, to authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap park on space for O.C.A. Anderson, 934, Anderson.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4477, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Ordinance passed on final first reading.
Ordinance number 4478, amend Chapter 2.48, Section 43, encoded City of Elizabeth, entitled Office of Relocation, specifically commending for the repayment of relocation assistance for displaced tenants.
You heard a reading, reading of ordinance number 4478, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading. Public hearing, further consideration of the foregoing ordinance shall take place at the City Council meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 9, 2014, at 7:30 p.m.
Ordinance number 4479, authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $1,700,000 with a down payment of $85,000 for the construction of the Elizabeth River Trail, Phase 4, the area along the Elizabeth River from South Ford Street to West France.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4479, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed on first reading.
The next ordinance, which is ordinance number 4480, has been removed from tonight's agenda.
Public hearing, further consideration of the foregoing ordinance shall take place at the City Council meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 23, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. Ordinance is on final passage.
Ordinance number 4473, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Henry Street between Julia Street and Fairmount Avenue, more particularly described situated in the city of Elizabeth County, Union State, New Jersey.
Sam, motion taken?
Aye.
Just back down to the call and say, by, Councilwoman Keenan, roll call again.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance 4474 has now been tabled.
Ordinance number 4474, amend bond ordinance number 3778, adopted January 10, 2006, for renovations to the Mac Building for the E-Port Health Center in the amount of $3,800,000, specifically to reappropriate bonds in the amount of $1,100,000 for demolition of the Mac Building and part improvements to the property.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4474, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Torres?
The Mac Building is a historic building here in City of Elizabeth, which is in the first ward, so it was tough for me to go with this, but after speaking with our administration and the expert, it was beyond compare, so I'm going to support this ordinance, and I just want to thank the experts and the administration for moving forward, and I can't see, I can't wait to see the next project I build on that day. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed on final reading.
Ordinance number 4475, authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $1,000,000 with a down payment of $50,000 for the installation of traffic lights, road resurfacing at the intersections of East Jersey Street and Winfield Scott Plaza, Jackson Avenue and Monroe Avenue and Amish Street.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4474, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks?
Yes, President. President, I am so happy to see that this moved forward and improved this traffic signal. I've been struggling for a while, for the last few years, as you know, it's very bad lighting there. We'll be able to do so minimal things here, such as, because camera on the west, hopefully cut down some darkness in that area. So I'll have to see that the administration move forward with this project and get to the finish, take my question.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed on final passage.
Ordinance number 4476, authorize the adoption of capital ordinance in the amount of $750,000 for the purchase and installation of a new phone system.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4476, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed on final reading. Is this, do we hear a motion to suspend?
Yes, President, motion to suspend.
Councilwoman Keenan, read the motion, is this second or no motion?
Second.
Councilwoman Questa, second? Roll call on the suspension.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye. We have several items before us of the suspension of a bond order, so it will be collectively?
Letter dated August 22, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Smith-Sondy asphalt construction company, Inc., Wallington, New Jersey, for the 2014 road resurfacing program at a cost of $2,177,645. Letter dated August 22, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Blackrock Enterprises LLC, Old Bridge, New Jersey, for the 2014 road resurfacing program at a cost of $2,145,528. Letter dated August 25, 2014, from the Elizabeth African Heritage Day Parade Committee in conjunction with the City of Elizabeth, requesting permission to host the African Heritage Day Parade and music celebration to be held on Sunday, September 14, 2014, at 2:00 p.m. in Union Square of Elizabeth Avenue on Broad Street to East Jersey Street and conclude in front of City Hall, where there will be vendors, music, dancing, and awards ceremony celebrating phenomenal women and to wave ball fees. Letter dated August 26, 2014, from Robert J. Lenny and Jr., Special Counsel, requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a settlement of litigation to the N.C. Institutional Tax Credit Fund, 10 New Jersey Series LP, et al., versus 621st Urban Renewal Associates Corporation, Inc., et al., versus the Elizabeth, reinstating tax concessions previously devoted to 621st Urban Renewal LP, on property located at 621st Avenue, and Millennium Urban Renewal LP, on property at 600 Fulton Street, and subordinating Elizabeth Home Improvement mortgage loans that had been granted to 621st Urban Renewal LP and Millennium Urban Renewal LP.
You heard a reading of the resolutions, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks?
Yes, President.
Councilwoman Bowman?
I would just like to say, on this, as I, I hope, this is the end of that the individual will be able to come back and sue us again, or if that's the case, I would hope George can say yes to that, yes.
And my understanding of this resolution itself?
It will. Thank you, President.
Yes, any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Mazza?
Madam President, I think what's happening tonight, receiving a letter from the Law Department, clearly explains what took place. God do exist, and always live, mountains, rivers, or lakes, or whatever, so amen.
Amen. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I also echo the settlements of my colleagues. I'm happy to see that this matter is being settled, and I look forward to the city, as well as the principals of this company, being handed to them full.
Are there any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Keenan?
Madam President, thank you. I'm in support of all of the resolutions, including the resolution on the emergency, the 621st Avenue march. As you recall, over the years, there have been issues with the delinquency taxes and so forth. Very happy that this has been settled, but I hope that we learn a lesson from it, and that is the future. When major, uh, become delinquent and banking taxes, we need to be more assertive, seeing that those situations are resolved before it comes to a court case. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments?
Okay, I'm just glad to last one, when I supported that the city will move forward with the resolution issue, my stance is the same. Primarily is for residents. Those residents who are living in those apartment buildings are my primary concern in terms of the removing of the tax credit, which will allow their rents to go up, was my major concern, and also how the buildings were being kept in terms of their quality of life. Thirdly, concern is making sure that the people who invest in our city just give a fair shake at it, whatever befalls, they fall on hard times, or something happens. I'm hoping that we can be compassionate as we dictate the rule over the city.
Seeing none, comments? Let's have a roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed.
Authorizing amendment to the fiscal year 2015 capital budget in the amount of $7,100,000. Authorizing temporary emergency appropriations for the fiscal year 2015 municipal budget in the amount of $580,000. In compliance with State Fiscal Year 2014 Appropriations Act, City Council is requesting to approve all payments related to accumulating uncompensated absence benefits. Approve the city's fiscal year 2015 correct action plan, concomitant with the fiscal year 2013, whatever it were.
You heard a reading of the resolutions, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed.
The first item on this page has been removed from tonight's agenda. Authorizing dedication by rider in fiscal year 2015 budget for donations acceptance of requests and gifts from the Adelina Corporation for the annual bookbag and supplies giveaway, as required by NJSA 485-29. Authorizing adoption of resolution pertaining to the Securities and Exchange Commission's Municipalities Continuing Disclosure Cooperative Initiative for the Review of Statement Accuracy and Possible Mistakes Concerning Secondary Market Disclosure of Financial Information. Authorizing void of contract to Firefire One LLC, Sparton, New Jersey, for the purchase of personal protection items and equipment under the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Authorizing void of contract to Bayer Ford, Morris County, New Jersey, for the purchase of 1 2015 Ford Explorer and 1 2015 Ford Transit Van at a total cost of $53,870. Authorizing void of contract to Malaford Lincoln Mercury, North Brunswick, New Jersey, for the purchase of OEM oil parts and repairs for various departments under the Somerset County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the period July 7, 2015 through April 1, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Authorizing void of contract to Ditching, Burlington, New Jersey, for the purchase of OEM little parts and repairs for various departments under the Somerset County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the period July 7, 2014 through April 1, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Authorizing void of contract to Thompson Reuters, Eagan, Minn, Minnelli, Adams. For the purchase of weather-based data access services for the law department and the municipal court division for the period July 1, 2014 to December 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Authorizing void of contract to oil printing service, West New York, New Jersey, for the printing of election ballots for 2014-2015 primary and general elections in the amount of $39,580. Authorizing void of contract to Evanston Insurance Company, Deerfield, Illinois, with the agent of record, Otterstat, an insurance agency, for an insurance policy covering city nurses for the period August 3, 2014 to August 3, 2015, at an annual premium of $16,470. Authorizing void of the respective contracts to WBVC Companies, Focus, New Jersey, and Papermark, East Hand, New Jersey, for the purchase of copper papers for all departments and divisions under the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
You heard a reading of the resolutions, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
Aye, ordinance passed.
Authorizing void of contract to Rico Americas Corporation, West Caldwell, New Jersey, for photocopiers caused by copy, leasing, payment, or new or replacement basis in maintenance of old photocopiers for the period July 1, 2014 through March 31, 2015, in a total amount not to exceed $85,000. Authorizing void of contract to Independence Constructors, East Bridgewater, New Jersey, for cleaning inspections, monitoring of oil water separators and above and underground tanks at various locations and Department of Environmental Protection compliance for the period July 1, 2014 through November 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $75,000. Authorizing void of contract to Modern Office Systems LLC, New York, New York, for the purchase of evidence lockers for the police department property room in the amount of $10,405.66. Authorizing void of contract to Charles S. Winter, Inc., Cherry Hill, New Jersey, for the purchase of 1 2014 Ford F-150 at a cost of $30,747, 1 2015 Ford F-450 with a landscape body at a cost of $56,540, and 1 Ford F-350 at a cost of $50,306 for the Department of Recreation at a total cost of $206,918. Authorizing void of contract to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., Athens, Wisconsin, for the purchase of 1 F-114 Retractor and Refurbishing of 1 tractor-tron aerial ladder truck for the fire department in the amount of $565,460. Authorizing void of contract to Montana Recreation Company, Sperling, New Jersey, for playground and park equipment for the Department of Recreation for the period July 1, 2014 to May 14, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Authorizing void of contract to Garden State Highway Products Line, Lynn, New Jersey, for the purchase of bricklaying new posts and signs supports the Department of Public Works for the period July 1, 2014 through July 1, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $100,000. Authorizing void of contract to Bayland Lumber, Lynn, New Jersey, for the purchase of lumbered associated materials for various departments under the Morris County Co-op for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Authorizing void of contract to Belinda Lumber Company, Brooklyn, New York, for the purchase of lumbered associated materials for various departments under the Morris County Co-op for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $75,000. Authorizing property officials to enter into a right-of-way agreement with New Jersey L.A. granting municipal consent for the non-exclusive use of the public right-of-way to install fiber-optic cable in the city of Elizabeth for a period of 15 years. authorized tax collector to credit in front of veteran deduction for tax year 2014 in the amount of $500 on the property located at 9 Trellestown Street and 831 Road Street. Authorized tax collector to cancel disallowed senior citizen deductions for tax year 2013 pursuant to a delineated list submitted July 23, 2014, in the total amount of $500.
You heard a reading of the ordinance, what is your pleasure?
More resolutions for a vote, President.
Moved in second, are there any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilwoman Questa?
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perkin Perkins Dastin?
All resolutions passed. Aye.
Authorized tax collector to cancel disallowed senior citizen deductions for tax year 2013 pursuant to a delineated list submitted July 23, 2014, in a total amount of $500. Authorized tax collector to cancel disallowed senior citizen deduction for tax year 2013 pursuant to a delineated list submitted July 23, 2014, in a total amount of $750. Authorized the property city officials to execute all documents necessary for the continuation of the fiscal year 2014-2015 housing opportunities for people with AIDS program from the City of New York Department Administration Bureau of Research, Research Program Development. Authorized property city officials to enter into an agreement with the United Negro College Fund, Inc., for the purpose of providing scholarships for students from the city of Elizabeth attending any accredited or-year institution. Authorized the property city officials to execute an agreement with Gateway Family YMCA, Elizabeth, to accept up to 50 children from the city summer camp program to offer academic and recreational activities for the period July 9, 2014 through August 15, 2014, at a cost of $25,000. Authorized the expenditure of $33,151.50 to the Elizabeth Board of Education for custodial security of bus services for the SOAR after-school program, utilizing Nicholas Murray Butler School, number 23, for the period October 7, 2013 through June 19, 2014. Authorized property city officials to execute all documents necessary to provide an owner-occupied basic deferred payment loan to be debt-beggarated for the rehabilitation of said property in an amount not to exceed $16,000. Authorized the postponement of the rental housing program mortgage held by the city on the property located at 46474 Spring Street. Authorized property city officials to execute the utility relocation agreement with the Jersey Department of Transportation in connection with the Jersey Department of Transportation in connection with the construction of intersection improvements at Route twenty-seven at West Grand Street, which will be funded by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Authorizing order of contract to TNF Associates Middleton, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services on a daytime and material basis in connection with traffic signal design and construction inspection at the intersection of East Jersey Street, Windmill Scott Plaza, and the intersection of Jackson Avenue and Monroe Avenue, Ann Street, at a cost not to exceed one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars plus reimbursable. Establish leads with boarding of properties listed on Schedule A on file in City Court's office in the total amount of one thousand seventy dollars forty-three cents. Establish leads with the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on Schedule A on file in the City Court's office in the total amount of eight thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars nineteen cents, and also nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars twenty-eight cents. Authorize office city officials to execute all appropriate documents for the two thousand and fourteen state in Jersey by the normal replacement fund program.
You heard a reading of the resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution for a loan, President.
Move then second. Are there any comments? Seeing that roll call.
Councilman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perotan, Perkins Dusty.
Aye. All resolutions passed.
Establish handicap parking spaces in front of the premises located at seven thirty-eight Amarin Avenue, forty-five Orchard Street, ten oh nine William Street, nine fifty-two Grove Street, eight fifty East Jersey Street, twenty Cedar Avenue, one thirteen Franklin Street. Delete the following handicap parking spaces from in front of the premises located at six twenty-nine River Avenue, seventy Florida Street, seventy-six Florida Street, twenty-eight Spencer Street, one fifty eighth Street, five oh nine Broadway Avenue, which is in front of Two Clover Street, five twelve South Park Street, and one twenty-three Ackley Street. Authorize settlement in workers' compensation litigation matter of Terro versus the City of Elizabeth in the total amount of thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. Authorize settlement in workers' compensation litigation matter of Olympia versus the City of Elizabeth in the total amount of sixty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars, paying to the bills of the Negro and Raffle licenses.
You heard a reading of the resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution for a loan, President.
Move then second. Are there any remarks?
Yes, President.
Yes. Councilman Gorman?
Uh, as you know, this past Sunday, uh, we have a first outstanding exposure at President Plaza, uh, and I just want to just, uh, say, say thanks to all those that, uh, well attended, one hundred fifty to two hundred eighty was attended. Uh, had a great time, great weather, uh, all the various churches that participated. Uh, as you know, our city is made of very, very, very diverse, all ethnic background, and you all came out and had a great time. The mayor attended and said a few words and, uh, uh, it was just a great time, great event. So I want to thank all the promoters that helped me with this together, all of them that attended, and they have received so many calls, email, text messages, asking about that again next year. So we ask the message, yes. Uh, looking forward to it next year, and we have another, uh, and those that are listening, you missed a treat. So look forward to this evening next year at President Plaza, and, uh, singing gospel gives you thanks, President.
Any other comments? Seeing that roll call.
Councilman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedanion?
Aye.
Councilman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Perotan, Perkins Dusty.
Aye. All resolutions passed. Are there any additional accommodations? Are there any more accommodations? Here are now the accommodations from our National Night Out recipients. Deputy Fire Chief, Perkins, Earl, Fire Hunter, Dan, Mel, Sheen, those. Latin Company Three, Fire Five, Amasa, Paredo, Fire Five, Brendan, McCompy, Rose, Zerilla, Second Ward Resident, Don, Pete, Line House, Four Ward Resident, Shirel, Norrell, Sixth Ward Resident, and Leslie, Sidilo, Sixth Ward Resident. Are there any other accommodations?
Uh, Mr. Osil, Brad, first.
Os, Osil, Brad. Osil, Brad, from the first ward was also accommodating our National Night Out. And are there any more memorials? I'll cancel necessarily for the accommodation. Are there any other memorials? Before we send for the memorial tomorrow, colleagues, I just want to remind you that we'll be doing a bookbag. The citywide bookbag, uh, will be coming through your neighborhood, coming through your ward, so be available, um, come out and meet your residents. My move is expected to be here with Chana Fox, along with our National Silence, and, um, former NFL football player, one of the New York Giants, Ryan Ullman. He's going to be with us also. To just encourage kids to get back in school, get ready for, um, academics, books, and, uh, flowers. Okay. Let's stand for the memorial. It's for Lawrence Carter, who is here. He's a former housing inspector and, um, in the Department of Customs and Public Services. Uh, Florina Carter works down in our department.